Good afternoon, I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. Council members at this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Curry Westerwick from First Presbyterian Church? And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, good evening.
Good evening. Holy One, we offer our thanks for this day, this evening, and this gathering of your people. Look upon us with your favor even as we lift our hearts and hopes for your peace and grace to be upon us. Move among us with a spirit of generosity and goodwill. Give us a yearning for your justice and a mindful humility in our service to the city we love so well. In your name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Members of the City Council, please indicate your presence electronically. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Six members of the City Council are present.
Alright, very good. Members of the City Council, you have before you a consideration, the minutes of a call meeting of October the 25th, 2016, and a regular meeting of October 25th, 2016. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
We've adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted six zero.
Alright, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let me do it. Before we get started, I see two of our newest council elects. I see our Mayor-elect John Rowe is here, and I also see Ms. Lisa Burke. Is Nathan here? Would you please join me up front? Let's give both of them a hand as they come up. You can probably tell that's not on the script, that's why they're both looking at each other like, "What's he up to?" But first of all, I want to congratulate both of you for running a clean campaign and winning decisively. So you're coming in here with a mandate from the citizens, don't screw it up. But I did bring you up because I want you to at least say something to the public and have a chance of what you're looking forward to next year. We'll start with the Mayor.
Oh my goodness. Ladies first. I'm very humbled and flattered to take on this new responsibility. It is so special, having grown up, this is my hometown, it's our hometown. And so I'm looking forward to serving everybody in the City of Portsmouth. Thank you.
I am truly humbled at this opportunity. I didn't know that I even wanted to run for City Council one year ago. But I've served on boards and commissions, I've done a lot of work in the community over the past 20 years, and I said that, you know, now's the time for me to make my mark in the world. Let me go ahead and put my hat in the ring and see what the people think. And I saw overwhelmingly what the people think, and I do thank you from the bottom of my heart. I hope that I can go forth and make you proud and join the members that are remaining here and then to take Portsmouth to another level. That's my goal, and that's my dream. So thank you for your vote.
And if I may, thank you Kenny, for your service. I know that this is a special place for you too. Yeah. And we're both Wilson High School Presidents. Yeah, go Presidents.
Alright, thank y'all very much. Thanks for coming. Give them a hand as they go back. Alright, great job. I think we also have a school board elect here, Ms. Angelia Smoke Allen. Would you please come up? I don't want to leave you out. Come on up here. I didn't see Ms. Allen. We're gonna let you talk too. And I do apologize. As they say in this business, elections matter. And young lady, you won, and you have been all over this city for the last several years. You've been very visible and very involved, and you have no idea what that means to people like us who do this for a living. So now you're in this thing to win it, and you won it. So give us a few words of your expectations and just what you expect.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the citizens of Portsmouth for electing me to the Portsmouth Public School Board. It is my sincere desire to help our school system move forward. I'd like to thank you because you've been a supporter of mine in the past. You've attended my Lead Hampton Roads graduation, and you've seen me move from just a regular citizen to this place now, so I appreciate you for doing that for me. My goal is to serve you with pride and make sure that I represent the city of Portsmouth as best as possible. So thank you for voting for me, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council's rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speakers podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Unfinished Business, 16-342. Adoption of an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 30 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia pertaining to Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Portsmouth Fire and Police Retirement System by amending and reordaining Sections 30-26, 34, 36, 52, 55, 58, 59, 60, 76, 97, 131, 151, 159, 161, 178, 181, 182, 183, and 217. And adopting a new Article 2, Division 6, and a new Article 3, Division 6 entitled Maximum Benefits and Other Limitations and Special Rules for the Purpose of Updating the Code to Comply with Federal Laws and Regulations Making Various Additional Modifications. Defer from the October 25th, 2016 City Council Meeting. Vision principle: Efficient Service Delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no... Whoa, I have a speaker. Mr. Garland Alexander.
Mr. Moody, would you like to comment before Mr. Alexander gets started?
Yes, thank you Mayor. As everyone knows, the motion is red, covers a lot of territory, and I think whenever there's mention of benefits, changes, a lot of people get concerned. Mayor, I would like to ask the manager to give some assurance to anyone affected on this, that this is not talking about anybody getting less pay, or the job getting eliminated, or any of those basic concerns, if I may.
Absolutely.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As this was carried over from our last meeting, the changes in the city's retirement code, Section 30 Retirement Systems, is brought back to City Council's approval tonight. The ordinance changes are to update the code to meet the IRS tax law requirements. When we presented this, we called to the council's attention that some of the sections of the code had not been updated since 2008. And by law, we're required each year to update the code based on IRS rules and regulations. In addition, it revises the board membership for the retirement board and requirements. It closes the supplemental system, it updates the Conflict of Interest section, and eliminates the 10 percent catch elimination requirement. The City Council asked us to come back and to adjust a part of the code that was presented where it would permit ex officio, ex officio members to vote. And that change was made, and it is reflected in this code that the CFO and the H Human Resource Management Director will not be able to vote.
Thanks, Dr. Patton. Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you, Mr. Moody. Mr. Alexander, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Garland Alexander, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I haven't had a chance to read all this because I just got a copy of it tonight, but the one part that I am concerned with that I've seen, we're losing representation on this board. We have right now, I believe, we have one fire, one police, one retiree from the fire retirees, and one from the supplemental. And the way this reads, that I'm looking at on Article 3052, it goes down to one representative to represent the whole system. So I believe there's other ways that we could do this. You could have more people from the retire... I understand why they're saying it's less and less people to volunteer from because it's less than... They're retiring, but to cut from four people that have vested interests in this system to go down to one, I believe that there's other ways that we can do this. I would ask that you would table this until sometime in January when we could take a look at it and see exactly what this is going to do as far as I have a representation on this board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good night. Alright, Madam Clerk?
I have no additional speakers on this item.
Okay, so we're in the need of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moody?
Well, Mayor, I was going to address Mr. Alexander's concerns. Is there someone can speak to the rationale of reducing the number of members to the board?
Yes, Mrs. Kelly, could you come forward, please, to address it? And I'd like to call to City Council's attention, at our last two board member, board meetings, and we have discussed with you the difficulty of having a quorum, we were not able to get a quorum.
We are not changing the number of board members. We are changing the direction that it's required to have one from the Portsmouth Supplemental, one from the Fire, one from the Police. It is up to council to determine who they want as board members, so we're just not making a requirement because we are struggling to find members that, especially from the supplemental system, because only, I think, 20 members left. So they're struggling to even find members that would want to even serve on this board. So what we're saying is, make it open. Just let council appoint who they want to. They can appoint a member from the Fire and the Police and the supplemental if we can find somebody that's willing to serve. But from now on, as the memberships drop, you might want to put more retirees on there, you might want to put more outside members. Some retirement systems in the state of Virginia, they have it where you don't have anybody is required from an employee standpoint to be on the board. It just depends on how council wants to do it. But this is just making it more open and flexible. So it's not...
We just wanted to make sure we put it out public, so Mr. Alexander understands and folks like him, that we're not cutting. They can all still apply, and the council will appoint.
And council can do what they please to put who they want on the board.
But we do have to have a quorum to be able to conduct business, and if we isolate those positions to certain places and you're not there, then it makes it difficult.
We had the actuary come in two months ago, and we had two board members at the meeting, and it was very disconcerting because that is a very important meeting to be at.
Sure. Especially when you're talking about actuarial information. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir, I was just going to add to that, that I think part of the point that was driven home by Dr. Patton and others at the last council meeting was that not only do we want people representative of these actual pension plans, but we need people who understand finance and investment. We're talking about investments of upwards of $200 million. This is a lot of money we're talking about. We don't just need somebody who's a member of a pension plan, we need somebody who actually understands investment policy. So we want that net as wide as we can to get the very smartest people we can to invest this money wisely.
Very good point. Mr. Moody, one more shot?
Yeah, to the Vice Mayor's point, I think at that presentation, it was revealed that the return on investment compared to other systems was lower than a lot of our other municipalities as well. So hopefully that can be reversed.
Okay, alright. There's a motion, is there a second? Is there a second, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. City Managers' Report 16-354. Adoption of an ordinance accepting a Virginia litter and recycling grant from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality in the amount of $16,276... Excuse me, $67, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund to promote litter prevention, recycling efforts, and stormwater and waste management programs. Vision principles: lifelong learning community, sustainable neighborhoods, enhanced quality of life, and efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 16-354 is an ordinance accepting a Virginia litter and recycling grant of over $16,000 from the Department of Environmental Quality for 2017 Grants Fund to promote litter prevention, recycling efforts, and stormwater and waste management programs. The work session did not provide any explanation of the breakdown of how this money would be distributed to litter prevention, recycling efforts, stormwater program, and waste management program. We have a Chief Financial Officer for the city. When an ordinance is created, we also need a copy of the financial report that explains how much money and why this grant has been asked for. We have had citizens come to City Council public hearing to talk about the issues of stormwater flooding their property. They have a right to know how the city is addressing these issues. The next issue is waste management. Is this money for our waste management of the city, or is it about the waste management of SIPSE? This is a FOIA request for the Chief Financial Officer. The citizens need a breakdown of how this grant will be used and why. In the future, whenever grants are being accepted, we, the people, need to know all the details presented at a work session. Just like an example tonight, things came up in the work session that hadn't been taken care of when it happened, and I would like to see that that stops tonight. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir, just as a matter of record, any ordinance before this council in the executive brief, which is available online, is the actual details of all the expenditures of who applies for a grant, what it's for, and what the money is to be used for.
We need a motion.
We're in need of a motion. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-355. Adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $310,023 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. Vision principles: Sustainable Neighborhoods, Enhanced Quality of Life, and Efficient Service Delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Ms. Donna Si. Three.
Fifty-eight.
Oh, I can't read your writing, I'm sorry. We have no speakers on this item, we're in need of a motion. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-356. Adoption of an ordinance accepting a hazmat team equipment exercise and training grant in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services hazmat team. Vision principles: Sustainable Neighborhoods, Enhanced Quality of Life, and Efficient Service Delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no speakers.
No adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-357. Adoption of an ordinance accepting a state homeland security grant program funds in the amount of $90,000 from the Federal Emergency Management Agency through the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the Southside Regional Hazardous Materials Response Team. Vision principles: Sustainable Neighborhoods, Enhanced Quality of Life, and Efficient Service Delivery. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-358. Adoption of a resolution supporting an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for an allocation of $670,500 through the VDOT Revenue Sharing Program for FY 2018 for improvements to Ballard Avenue and Hyman Street. Vision principles: A robust and prosperous economy and proud military history. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 16-358 is a resolution to apply to VDOT for over $670,000 for the year 2018 for road improvements to Ballard Avenue and Hyman Street. The Ballard Avenue project is to reconstruct Ballard Avenue to improve the existing roadway and drainage infrastructure. The Hyman Street improvements are for crossing for the CXX Railroad. The City Managers' Report states that the preliminary engineering report is complete and design options have been evaluated. The overall project includes an alternate access road to Elmhurst Lane, but that portion of the project is not eligible for funding. The $670,000 is a commitment in the city's capital improvement plan. The citizens of Portsmouth needed to have the preliminary engineering report and design options available for us to evaluate how the existing roadway and drainage infrastructure would be improved. We also would like to see how the Hyman Street improvements would be designed for the crossing for CSX. We, the people, would also like to see the portion of the project that includes an alternate access road to Elmhurst Lane that will not be eligible for funding. Lastly, where are we going to get $670,000 in the capital improvement plan? All this information would have been explained in the work session before it is on the agenda for approval tonight. This information needs to be provided by a conference meeting with the citizens and give us the details. And please, don't block my communication. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have no additional speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 16-359. Adoption of a resolution supporting an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for an allocation of $1,225,000 through the VDOT Revenue Sharing Program for the FY 2018 for the reconstruction of Burton Point Road. Vision principles: A robust and prosperous economy and proud military history. Electronic roll call, and I have a speaker, Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 16-359 is a resolution for over $1 million from VDOT for the year 2018 for the reconstruction of Burton Point Road. The Burton Point Road reconstruction project consists of reconstructing Burton Point Road from the Elm Avenue intersection south to the Elm Avenue to improve safety and drainage. It is reported that the project will result in a significant safety improvement by providing a defined roadway accommodating pedestrian users and eliminating on-street parking. It is reported that the improvements are beneficial to the city, the Navy, and industrial stakeholders along the roadway. None of this information has been provided to the citizens. How do we know that the improvements are beneficial to the city, the Navy, and industrial stakeholders along the roadway? The city wasn't concerned about the Navy when Willabrada was dismissed. It required a million-dollar match, requires a commitment in the city's capital improvement plan. This is why the engineer is presenting it to City Council for approval, because it has to commit to raise our taxes to get the money for the ability to make a loan. The citizens have not been informed on the details of this project. They elected by... We, the people, are going to make decisions without any knowledge or conversation with the people who elected them. By the way, don't these two transportation projects have to go through the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization too? We, the people, need evidence, as well as public hearings on all projects, when public money is to be used to fund them. It is our government, and it is up to us to self-govern. We need to be part of the decision-making process. All the projects I spoke to tonight is a prime example of our right to self-govern has been taken from us. We need a conference to have the information given to us. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir, as... Before I make a motion to adopt this resolution, I'd just like to take a minute, especially at Thanksgiving time, to thank Dr. Patton and Doug Weller and her team on these grants. If you all have been using your calculators, we are about to approve $2.3 million worth of grants tonight, and that's a lot of good work for a lot of good purposes, and Dr. Patton, I just want to say thanks to you and your team.
Very good. Okay.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. New Business, 16-360. Boards and commissions, Council members.
Thank you, but we have nothing this night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 16-361. Item submitted by council members.
Thank you. Let me... First of all, it's... Can we give an update, Dr. Patton, on the FEMA? The President signed the order, I think it was two days ago, including Portsmouth, Hampton, and I think Isle of Wight. Go ahead and give us the update, because I know we were a little under the weather when we got the first cut, and we didn't make it, and we had shared with all of our citizens that we had challenged that, the Governor had committed that he was going to support us appealing that and go back to the federal government, and on our behalf, he did that, and now we're included. So, Dr. Patton, if you would, just for the public.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, about two weeks ago, some cities in our Hampton Roads area that were much more heavily damaged by Hurricane Matthews immediately received approval for FEMA to come in and to assist with their residents and the damages that they had received. For example, Virginia Beach's damage early on was $51 million and growing. And the damage which was assessed in regard to the city of Portsmouth, particularly the output of the monies of which the city expended, and then looking to the damage that our citizens were under, the cities who were not approved in the first group of approvals came together and worked with the Department of Relief and proposed through the state and to the federal government that we be considered for our... federal government that we be considered for, our citizens be considered for funding through FEMA considerations. It was actually late Sunday that we got the approval, and with that, we were always planning that if we got the approval, where would we host the FEMA Center and how would it operate? So, we were one step ahead in that the FEMA Center will open on Monday, the twenty-eighth. It will be twelve hours from seven to seven. They will open initially for seven days a week to include Sunday. At the end of the Saturday, they will determine if they need to extend that time for citizens to come the following week, but right now, based on the amount of damage, they think that in the twelve hours, seven days, that they will be able to address our citizenry. We have put a lot of information out. It is online. We have been sending it through our email blast for citizens to know the place. It's our Social Services Building, right on High Street, and we will have a team of people there, not only from FEMA, but people from our FAR Emergency Management to assist any citizens with the packages that they will have to complete in order to start the process for refunding.
Thank you very much for that. And to all of our citizens that are watching this and the ones here, if you know of persons that need assistance, please help them. Thinking in terms of, I know out in Truxton, was it Peenock?
Peenock.
I think it was Peenock, where we had several homes that seniors, and I think seventies and eighties years old, had some major impact and needed some assistance, and we spoke with the Civic League presidents and some of the neighbors there. So, if you have neighbors and people that you know are in need and need help, please contact us or bring them down to the office, and we'll be able to assist them. But we need to log those damages and get those. And how are we with getting those damage assessments? Are they still coming in?
They are still, they are still coming in, and Chief Bonnet and his team are continuing to answer questions from the citizens, and as you indicated, they went out into the Truxton area and actually hosted a meeting with the citizens there, and they were there about an hour and a half. So, they are prepared with what the next steps are, what they need to do, what they need to bring, and then the process can begin.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir. It's holiday time, so I have a lot to talk about. We will start a lot of our holiday traditions before we meet again in December, and so I want to remind everyone that on December the third, just about ten days from now, the Santa will come to Midtown at the Kroger Marketplace at ten AM that Saturday. Midtown Santa will open, and that will be followed immediately by a book stroll on High Street for children and adults both. On Friday and Saturday nights, it is snowing every Friday and Saturday now at the Children's Museum in the Middle Street Mall outside at five thirty, six thirty, and seven thirty PM. It snows, and it is a lot of fun for about five minutes. On the following weekend, on December tenth, we have our new event this year, a children's parade, which will begin at Green Street down near the Kitchen Coop store, and from Green to the foot of High Street to the Christmas tree, that we will have a children's parade at ten AM on Saturday, December tenth. And just following that, we will have the Old Town Holiday Music Festival, which is a wonderful event for all ages that's from noon to six. We have the firefighters out with the chimeneas roasting marshmallows. We have every singing group from churches to schools, from not only Portsmouth but around the region, who come in and are singing on every street corner, or dancing, or clogging, or something that's a lot of fun, and there's a lot of activities for children that afternoon. And then, of course, at the Portsmouth Cultural Arts Center at High and Court Street is the Coleman Winter Wonderland Collection, the little figures that used to be at Coleman Nursery, and that is a ticketed event, but you can go in and see all the little figures and take your kids and your grandchildren and relive all those fun memories. And there is, Old Town Santa is there at the museum at High and Court Street. So, you, of course, as always, you can find all these events on portseventsva.com. In addition to that, sir, I'd like to add an item to the agenda to remove the fifteen hundred dollar fine from the City Council rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda. You'll be voting electronically. This item is denied by a vote of two to four.
Uh, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, um, Dr. Patton, can we get an update on the MWBE program phase, where we are? We've passed the policy, and where are we with getting the program phase developed?
Ms., Dr. Whitaker, I would have to refer that to the city attorney.
Dr. Whitaker. Excuse me. Dr. Whitaker. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. We, the procurement office has been working with my office in terms of reviewing drafts of programs, in terms of development. The first draft is expected in my office this week, and we will begin the review to make any kind of adjustments or suggestions with that, with the expectation of having something completed, if not at the next meeting, but by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, all right. And also, Mr. Attorney, where are we on the GPDC issue?
With regard to that, we have requested hearing dates for January. We're circulating dates with counsel for a hearing in January.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Simmons forgot one. The flagship magazine has what they call a Steel Serving Award, and I was honored to be one of their inaugural awardees about four, four or five years ago, and they're having it again this year. And one of our locals, they have the first two-time awardee, and it's going to be Mr. Bruce Lalande. He'll be receiving that from the flagship, be from December tenth. So, just want to give that shout out to him and to the flagship for continuing to do what they do, is they find veterans who've served us in a time of war and who are still doing great things in the community, and give annual awards to several of them.
Well deserved, Bruce. Congratulations. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Sixteen dash three sixty-two. Report on pending items, and we have none this evening. Sixteen dash three sixty-three. Non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Barry Randall.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Patton?
Yes, I was pushing the wrong buttons, Mayor. I wanted to just add a point of what Mrs. Simmons shared about the children's parade. If you remember, last December, when we were talking about the holiday activities, one of the things that came up, and I remember Mr. Moody was saying, the importance of children being in a parade, and many children never get to be on a float. So, with that, one of the things that I was always told by my daughter, that, Mom, you did everything for me growing up, but there's one thing you failed to do. And I said, Usha, what is that? And she said, I was never in a parade. So, with that, this parade is for children whose parents can decorate their bike, put them in the wagon, pull them in whatever, and it is their parade. They can come from Green Street all the way down to High Street. They can dress up. They can do whatever they want to do, but it is their parade. So, the children of Portsmouth, going forward in this inaugural parade, will say, this city allowed every child to be in the parade if they choose to be in. So, that's what this children's parade is about, and thank you, members of council, and Mr. Moody for last December saying, it would be nice to do something like that. So, we're putting it in place.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, Mr. Randall.
Mr. Randall.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Barry R. Randall here tonight, more so just to thank the citizens of Portsmouth at large. During this last election, we heard from our citizens, and I think that this is a great opportunity for all of us who can, with great reason, to come together and just move the city forward. I want to congratulate all of the persons who've won both on school board and here on City Council, and I want the citizens to know that our mayor-elect, Mr. John Rowe, has the people's pastor full one-hundred percent confidence and support. I believe that he is the one to lead our city further, and I know we're going to, you know, there's going to be some bumps in the road, one down, one more to go, but we're going to get through this. And I just ask that the citizens at home, those that don't know much about many of the people that were elected, all of them, I have great confidence and support in, and I believe that we are in good hands. So, I'm just here tonight just to say thank you all, citizens of Portsmouth, for casting your vote. I never doubted that the citizens would speak. I just got back in from passing out baskets out Swanson Home, but I ask also that you all continue to, you know, keep that abreast as to what's going on out there and what have you, and then tomorrow, Sheriff Watson has allowed me to feed for the third year the nonviolent offenders in the jail, so I'll be busy this week. So, again, a happy Thanksgiving to all of you all, and let's get behind our new mayor, John Rowe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Clyde Toler.
Good evening, all elector officials, and the new electorate that's here, too. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and even to the people at home in Portsmouth. Happy Thanksgiving. I hope that each and every one of you gave somebody that don't have something for Thanksgiving. Now, I've been accused of coming up here saying, hey, but look, yeah, I do. I give two cooked dinners to two schools, Chesapeake and Portsmouth, and I give them to peoples that never had turkey dinner, and I give them to a full cook, because some of them, you know, can't cook. They just stay in the kitchen with the parrot. But anyway, my main thing is here tonight, I want you to do something about these people throwing these papers in my driveway, all in people's yards. They just throw them vacant lots. Now, we're keeping Pawview clean. Now, I've got some young teenagers that do that, and we got it clean. We want the city clean for the holidays, because if peoples come to your house and see all this paper and trash in the yards and all, they think we live in a dump. So, let's everybody get out, and let's try to get the city cleaned up and get these peoples off of these corners and standing around these little miniature stores with the little drug pickups. They ain't, it's cold, and you can't be standing out there in this cold weather like that for nothing. Let's get these peoples out now there, and if these minimalists can't take care of it, then let's start fining them for letting people hang around there and using the dumpster dumpster and the place for the urinating and all in the daytime. This is terrible, and we need to do something about that. Dr. Patton, I gave you, and I asked you something about Pawview. I don't want to bring that up out here, but I'd like to see you after, see that you ever did anything about it, and tell me what the code is, okay? We'll get to that later. But anyway, I want to thank each and every body, and Miss Simmons, you should have been there, like I told you. But anyway, everybody have a nice holiday. Let's get together and let's do something for peoples who don't have. We can do it. We're giving city, I heard you said mail, so now let's do it. There's a lot of people, some is bad for the child, but do it anyway. But I still, see, these papers here, when they rain and all, this is what blocks up our water sewage thing, where the water won't go there. This need to be stopped, not only in Pawview. I was on medium drive in Cavill, Atlanta, they were out there throwing them all in the street, too. So, let's see, can we do something about this? But each and every one of you, I would like to see you, don't have no animosity about nobody in this city. Let's all come together and join hand. Let's all stick together and be together like always. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. Good night.
Our final speaker is Mr. Mark Godalde Kietrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. There was this man named Mark Anthony. According to Shakespeare, he gave a stirring eulogy of Caesar, although he said he came to bury him, not to praise him, but he said that sort of tongue-in-cheek. I borrowed that phrase, or a portion of that phrase, for my speaking topic, but I'd like to say to Mayor Wright, as somebody who supported you early on and became disaffected later, it's going to take time for us to get a good feel for your legacy, as with every other political leader. And a lot of the things that people have said to you from this lectern have been negative, but I want you to know, I recognize, and there are other people in this city who recognize that you have done some good work in your time here. You came in after a turbulent recall campaign that took out Mayor Holly, our longest-serving mayor in recent times, and perhaps in all two hundred and sixty-four years of this town called Portsmouth. And you came in without any experience in government and tried to hit the ground running, and you have run very hard in the last six years, from one end of the city to the other. You have been present at so many events, many of them events that most of us have not heard anything about. You've been present in a lot of lives in this city. You've served as a role model for a lot of youngsters, and that goes back to the work you did before you ever entered the political realm, looking out for the young people in the city. You've been a staunch supporter of education. That's something we've not seen councils and mayors do in the twenty years that I've been here. You've been right there all the time to assist education, and education, in my book, is the most important thing that we do at the local level. We are building our future. So, I applaud you for all of those. The issues that you and I have, they'll be our issues, and probably in ten years, they'll be smaller than the accomplishments in my memory, if I still have any memory. So, thank you for your service. I hope that, based on, based on comments I heard you make yesterday, that as a private citizen, you will stay engaged. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Mark is alluding to, yesterday, we attended, we had a forum over at the Hampton Convention Center on poverty, and most of you know that that is an issue that's near and dear to my heart, and as one of the regional leaders at the PDC, we asked for the regional executive director to bring together the entire region to talk about this issue, and yesterday was the first of hopefully many, and we had some very significant information that was put out about poverty throughout Hampton Roads, not just Portsmouth, but throughout Hampton Roads, and we had an excellent presentation by a company out of Atlanta, Georgia, and the name of it, the, do you remember the name? Something Apartments. There was a, a group that took a housing authority project in the middle of Atlanta, and it might have been about six hundred tenants there, and they transformed that group. They tore down the housing complex. They built new luxury or medium-grade apartments. They had a mixed-use concept. They had people paying market rate, and they also had people that qualified for assistance, public assistance, all living in this one community. And over the last ten years, not only has that community flourished, no one in the neighborhood knows who are the ones on public assistance versus the ones that are paying their full load. The schools that they had set up, it was a charter school, one of the issues I had, but I let the lady continue without interrupting her, but the schools, the learning environment, and every- But the schools, the learning environment, and everything in that community in Atlanta not only doubled, in some areas tripled. And it was amazing what they'd done and how they did. And it was a very candid conversation about people and how we exist in this new world order. And they took a fresh approach, and they have now taken that model, and they are replicating that model throughout the country. And I think she said, how many places, Bob, you were there? At least 15 or 16 places throughout the country that they're replicating that. And the city of Norfolk had brought them in for a day to give them that presentation and to inquire about their services. And they were gracious enough to allow that group to speak to the entire region, and so we were all there. Portsmouth was well-represented. Our police chiefs were there, Mr. Baldwin, Sherry Neal. It was quite a few of us, but it was quite a few from the region. As a matter of fact, the folks from Atlanta had mentioned that they had never presented to a group that size. So, it showed quite a bit of interest in this region. And one of our comments was, this is all of our problem. And I mentioned the 2011 State of the Region Report that Dr. Jim Cook gave that talked about the number of black males that are no longer in the workplace in Hampton Roads, and what the numbers were in 2000, and they skyrocketed over 40,000 by 2009. And we estimate that that number is well over 60,000 today. We can no longer ignore that figure if we want this region to grow and prosper. And so, that was a very good segue. Thank you for bringing that up, Mark. And I'm hopeful that we can get a lot out of this conversation, because it was very enlightening. And what was more enlightening were the questions that people asked, because they could not believe you had a community with, a diverse community of people of different income levels and all of that. And the people that came into the neighborhood and moved in was because the schools there outperformed all of the other schools. Those schools there were at the level of the private, top-notch schools in Atlanta. And so, people were moving in that neighborhood to fill that up, and they gave every person that was in the housing authority first dibs to move back into the community. And it was really an interesting model, and it's something we need to take up here and we need to explore further. But thank you for bringing that up, because that was very important. And that whole meeting started because of myself and Mayor Kenny Alexander, well, actually, Mayor Paul Framan, I talked about it about a year ago. And then Kenny Alexander, the new mayor of Norfolk, and myself brought it up to the region to bring this thing to a point, because that is a matter, and I think Dr. Whitaker talks often about that issue here in Portsmouth. That's an issue throughout Hampton Roads that we need to take a real hard look at. So, thank you, Mark, for that. And I wish I could give you five minutes instead of your three, but good night.
You can change the rules.
Yeah, I can change the rules. Thank you, sir.
For everybody.
And good night.
Good night, sir.
With that, is there anything else for the good? Okay, we're adjourned. Good night, happy holidays.